Okay, this meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really want to extend everyone a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. I ask right now if you would please turn your cellphones to silent if you have not already done so, and we really do appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent Schools District. Este Junto Arreglar de Waco ISD está convocado, les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias estén disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue descargada está disponible para todos. Por favor apájar su teléfono celular y les agradecemos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. I have the distinct, I feel like I'm the voice behind the mariachis over here. I have the distinct pleasure and joy to introduce the University High School Mariachi Troyanos, who will be performing "Mea De Comer Este Tunna" by Luis Martinez Serrano. Special thank you to Archie Hatton, who revitalized this program and continues to support its growth. We are so, so thankful for all of your work. So, take it away, mariachis.
(Music)
Thank you so much, really so thankful for these students coming in and taking time to perform from us and celebrating and supporting Hispanic culture is especially important in our community as 61.6% of Waco ISD students are Hispanic or Latino. From exceptional services and support provided to more than 3,000 students via ESL and bilingual support staff, to community partners like the HLN who are supporting students in so many ways, including UHS with a special mentorship group called Navegando, which is all in Spanish. And it is really important and hugely a joy to see this promoting and providing this language equity as part of our academic achievement in Waco ISD, and that for sure is always worth celebrating. The Waco ISD, some of our code of ethics is our commitment to service. So as the Board of Waco ISD, we will commit to focus on our attention on fulfilling the Board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. We as the Board will diligently prepare for and attend Board meetings. We as the Board will avoid personal involvement in activities the Board has delegated to the Superintendent. We as the Board will continue seeking education that will enhance our ability to fulfill our duties effectively, and we as the Board will be continuously guided by what is best for all students of the district. With that, do we have anyone signed up for? Okay, no public comments, so we will go ahead, and if you, everyone could please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We will move on to item four, special recognitions or pledge leaders. Sorry, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for the duty and justice for all.
The Board will meet me in front of the dais.
Good evening, Madam President, Trustees, and Dr. Kinkanen. We're going to recognize our pledge leader first. Each month, one campus selects a pledge leader for the Pledge of Allegiance for the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees for the month of September. We have chosen a student from South Waco Elementary, Kalani Morales Rodriguez was selected for this honor. Kalani is in fifth grade and her favorite subject is science. She participates in a book club, loves to draw and animate, and play soccer. Her teacher, Mrs. Stimson, says Kalani is the most humble and persistent student. When she grows up, Kalani wants to be an author, action comic, or an animator. Thank you to Mom Melissa Rodriguez for being here and showing your amazing daughter with us, and thank you to Principal Fraser for being here with your student tonight. Next, we have our Advanced Placement Scholars. Students receive the designation of Advanced Placement AP Scholar through hard work and high academic achievement. The AP courses and exams, there are three designations, AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, and AP Scholar with Distinction. The award of AP Scholar is awarded to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Waco ISD has a total of 27 students who have earned one or more of these awards. From University High School, AP Scholars are as follows. Oscar Estrada and Mr. and Mrs. Hatton are here tonight to receive the recognition for Archie Hatton. Sidney Lanning, Nahomi Perez, and Jay German Ruiz. For Waco High School, we have William Barbie, Annabeth Carlson, Josephette Donaldson, Lucas Everett, Luke Grant, Ethan Limkey, William Prather, Hudson Rice, Alana Sharam, and Piper Woodward. And we are missing so many students because a lot of them have already graduated and they're at college doing amazing things tonight. AP Scholar with Honor is awarded to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and a score of three or higher on four or more of these exams. From University High School, Miriam Hinahosa. Waco High School, Kayla Cho, Daniel Garner, and Cohen Scott. AP Scholar with Distinction is awarded to students who receive an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and score a three or higher on five or more of these AP exams. University High School, Andres Levano. Waco High School, James Burnius, Samuel Everett, Helen Goodman, Libby Hack, Alexis Hookum, Danielle Sanders, and Sarah Schlappy. Congratulations to all of these amazing students. It wouldn't be a recognition if we didn't recognize the teachers who help our students get there, so tonight we're recognizing teachers for their AP accomplishments. The following teachers had eight or more students who scored three or higher on AP exams. University High School, Becky Zinerd, AP Language and AP Literature, had 17 students. Crystal Ballard, AP World History, had 12 students. Reyes Lopez, AP Spanish Language and AP Spanish Literature, had 20 total students. Waco High School, Delilah Amiasta, AP Chemistry, had 10 total students. Joel Colismo, AP 2D Art and AP 3D Art and AP Drawing, had a total of eight students. Joshua Marks, AP Human Geography, had 11 total students. Paul Gonzalez, AP Language, AP Literature, and AP Psychology, had 37 total students. And Rosa Pivia, AP Spanish Language, had 12 total students. Thank you all so much for your dedication to our students and to our community. And next, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference. For students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners, the recognition celebrates the theme for the 23-24 school year, lead for results, and acknowledges the impact our community partners have on our students and staff. In September, the district is recognizing His House Church. Here to accept the award from His House is Pastor Juan Carrion and his wife, who is actually a teacher at Kendrick, Deanna Carrion. They have been an amazing partner to Waco ISD by supporting students and staff at Kendrick Elementary, as well as University High School. His House Church has helped Kendrick by providing free disc jockey services and a Star Pep Rally. They also participate in the Star Book Club, and church members come and read to students regularly. They greet students and provide music on the first day of school. They record the Campus Star Song annually, are a sponsor of and volunteer for the Easter Hop event, and have assisted with getting the Parent Teacher Association started this year. Over the last few years, they've also donated about 300 backpacks to students. For Waco University, I mean, University High School, His House Church has also volunteered to cook for perfect attendance, student luncheons, provide free disc jockey services at the senior class picnic, and have helped mentor students. Thank you so much for everything you do for the community and for our students.
Thank you, and before we leave, we have one more teacher to recognize. Thank you all.
Joe Colosimo, AP 2D Art and 3D Art and AP Drawing, had a total of eight students. Thank you so much. That concludes special recognitions for this evening.
We will move on to item number five, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kinkanen?
All right, good evening. I want to say thank you again to the University High School Mariachi Troyanos performers and their director, Archie Lee Hatton IV. And that was a great way to kick off tonight's meeting. Really enjoyed hearing them. Those students will also be performing at our elementary schools in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, and actually I got to, showed up at Mountain View last year and got to hear them by accident, didn't know they were playing, and it was such a great treat. And our, all of our campuses are doing a wonderful job of honoring Hispanic Heritage Month with special classroom lessons, festivals, and activities that celebrate and educate students about Hispanic culture, traditions, and history. And I want to thank our Communications Department for highlighting those on social media. It's been a real treat to see everything that's happening tonight, and I'll have to tell you, it was really good. Bell's Hill is hosting their annual enchilada dinner, and so if some of us can't breathe up here, it's because we got, we had some of those enchiladas, and they were wonderful. That's an annual tradition at Bell's Hill Elementary. And then Mountain View will be hosting Hispanic Heritage Night next week. Lake Armona Story staff and students are practicing common Spanish phrases. There was a cute video that you may have seen about that, and they're using those and introducing them during their morning announcements. They also had a show and tell with students bringing items from their native country. And still ahead, in October, Tennyson Middle School, Kendrick Elementary, and South Waco Elementary will be hosting community celebrations. So our families should be on the lookout for communication from their campus on those special events, and I'd like to thank all of our teachers and our administrators who are engaging our students and community in those fun, important activities. Something a little heavier, accountability lawsuit update, we'll, I'll speak to it a little bit, and then I know Mrs. Bell has some information later on in her report regarding testing and accountability. I want to thank the Board again for unanimously approving the filing of a petition to intervene in a lawsuit against Commissioner Mike Marath in his official role as Commissioner of the Texas Education Agency. There are several relevant updates to share tonight, but I do want to thank you again for valuing the work of our teachers and our staff and taking a strong early stand to protect our students and our schools. You sent a clear message to our community and apparently Commissioner Marath and TEA that it doesn't make sense for schools to get lower ratings when student achievement is actually increasing. And in less than two full business days from the filing of our September 8th petition, Commissioner Marath announced that the state decided to take another look at accountability, methodologies, and ratings. And he announced that they would be delaying for at least one month the release of district ratings. As of today, that date has moved to October 13th, as we learned this afternoon, because the hearing that was scheduled for this coming Monday has now been pushed to October the 10th. And so I take that, I take the delayed ratings, and of course, the number of districts that are now signing on to the lawsuit is a good sign, and we definitely have a strong argument. Now my rant, and my rant is that this A through F system was a bad idea from the very beginning. We all knew it several years ago when the state started talking about this, and then we saw it, right, when it came in 2019, and we had the complicated methodologies for determining the ratings, especially in Domains II and Domains III, where you really don't know what you're looking at until you spit the numbers in the complicated formula, and then it comes out with something. It's that complicated, and I will tell you that it is a drain on our time. We spend a lot of time trying to project our ratings. Mrs. Bell spends an extraordinary amount of time with the calculations to even understand where we are, and now we're having to do them again. She's going to talk about that later this evening, and we may have to do them a third time this year. But not only do we do that here at the central office, but we also, our campuses are doing that as they are making projections for their students, for their students, and helping them to set goals to improve, and that has been a challenge for us all year, is we didn't have the information that we needed to set those goals, and so we did some, what did Miss Bell call them today? Some almost ghost, is that was the word you used? Phantom, phantom targets, because we were, we were taking a guess at what, where the, where those cut scores were going to be. And so, you know, again, just such a drain and doesn't give us much meaningful information, and it's one test on one day, and our kids are more than that, and our schools are more than that. So that's my rant. I'm sticking with it. I've been annoyed by it since they started it, and I, you know, this just shows that it, it's not successful. A through F ratings are not a good measure of our school's success. The temporary injunction hearing will be in Travis County, as I said, on October the 10th. There are now more than 100 school districts who have signed on to the lawsuit, and those school districts serve over a million Texas children, and I suspect that number is continuing to grow. So thank you again for approving our participation in the lawsuit and for signing on early and taking a stand for our kids and our schools. Any questions about the lawsuit?
Just to, Dr. Kinkanen, just to reiterate to the folks out there, the parents that are listening, it's, when we're talking about A through F rating, it is not as simple, take all your kids' grades, average them by the number, and then you get a score. That is not what this A through F accountability rating is by any means. It's a lot of calculations and different formulas, and there's lots and lots of additional information that, it is a ridiculous instrument to slap on a school or on a district. And I, I really want to point that out, that it is simply not looking at all your scores in the teacher's gradebook and averaging them to get an A or a B or a C or D or F. It's a lot, lot more. And as I said last time, and I'm still going to say it, it's politically motivated. That's it.
All right, thank you. It certainly doesn't measure the richness of our programs like the Mariachi Band does it. It's not included in there, and our kids are getting a lot more than that one test. Tennyson Middle School Beam Signing, another milestone in our 2021 bond construction program, and we are excited about inviting our community out to make their mark on the, on the beam that I believe is the highest beam in the school, or that's what they say it should be. That event's going to be on Monday. That is a staff development day and a student holiday. Intentionally, we chose that day so that our, our families could come out and the greater Waco community could come on campus and sign that beam anytime between noon and 6:00 PM to leave their mark. The entrance is going to be off of 60th Street, near the 60th and Sanger intersection. So we're excited about the beam signing and looking forward to just celebrating that milestone of construction. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, I, thank you, Dr. Kinkanen. Looking forward to the beam signing. It's always fun, and I, I just wanted to echo my sentiments with Mr. Patton and the accountability A through F lawsuit. They made it A through F because they felt that it was easier for the public to understand, but then in many multiple meetings, I've heard, but C is really good. And I thought, no, that's not what parents understand. So it has just been convoluted from the beginning, and like, the complexity of it is mind-boggling. So I, thank you, Dr. Kinkanen, for being one of the first adopters and bringing this before the Board, and I appreciate you standing up for our teachers, our administrators, and most of all, our students. Okay, moving on to item number six, information items and reports. Mr. Grant, is there anything on there that you would like to discuss, any of those items?
No.
Mr. Davis, anything you'd like to discuss?
No.
Mr. Vedania, anything you would like to discuss?
No.
Mr. Guillory, anything you would like to discuss?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, is there anything you'd like to discuss? Mr. Patton, is there anything you'd like to discuss?
No.
Okay, seeing as there's no discussion, moving on to the consent agenda. Item number seven, let's see, Mr. Grant, anything you would like to pull?
No.
Mr. Davis, is there anything you'd like to pull?
No.
Mr. Vedania, is there anything you would like to pull?
No.
Mr. Guillory, is there anything you'd like to pull?
No.
Mr. Ochoa, anything that you would like to pull? And Mr. Patton, is there anything you'd like to pull?
No.
Okay, hearing none, I will, what am I, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Thank you, Mr. Davis, a second. And since no one wanted to pull anything, I'll just go and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the approval of allowance expenditure authorization number 11 for Waco High School. Mrs. Barera? Mrs. Barretta.
Good evening, President, members of the board, Dr. Kinkanen. So this agenda item is actually related to that $8.4 million credit that we brought to you several months ago on Waco High School. So it's more of the incorporating the changes that were required by the building shift and the relocation of the central utility plant. So that's really what it is. It's more of just bringing all those numbers into the right place. And it does not increase the amount of the contract. It is covered in the owner's contingency.
Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the AEI number 11 for costs associated with changes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vedania, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory? Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, hearing no discussion, I will take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Mrs. Barretta, I also want to say I'm glad that you're here and I'm sorry that you're not feeling well. Moving on to item number nine. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding approval of allowance expenditure authorization number 17 for GW Carver Middle School.
Thank you. So this AEA, the majority of the cost associated with it, the increase in cost, is to address the cost of casing the drilled piers that were required for the foundation of the building. Now, when the district was in the early in the design phase, we did have a geotechnical report done. And they did identify in the report that we could have the possibility of having to case the piers, which basically means putting a concrete pipe around the pier, or steel pipe, sorry, around the pier. And they drill the hole and drop the casing down, and then they have to do all of this. And it is, of course, way more expensive than if you just have to drill a hole by itself. We had an allowance in our owner's contingency for it because we knew it was a potentiality. But it ended up, we had to case every single pier on the project. We did an extreme amount of due diligence with verifying the depth of the piers and that the reports we were looking at were consistent and correct. So with our geotechnical consultant, with the structural engineer, with the construction manager at risk, and ourselves, and the architect, we all verified it. So that is the actual amount that we have to spend. You will also notice in this AEA, there's a lot of credits applied to it. And that is to, you know, show that throughout the project, our team has worked to reduce costs wherever we can. And without, you know, impacting, negatively impacting the quality or the educational performance of the building. So, you know, be in good stewards of the taxpayers' money and realize that sometimes we're going to have an add. So we've got to be having, we've got to have these reductions to be able to help offset those.
Okay, great. Hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve AEI number 17.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vedania, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
Can you explain to me why we're having to do these casings? I don't understand what you, I was paying attention. I just didn't understand what you were saying. Can you put it in my language?
No problem. Okay, so what happened was that there's water below the ground, say, maybe at 12 feet, 13 feet below the ground. And when they are drilling the pier down there, they drill down and the auger, the hole, will start to slough off and fall back in. And so it won't hold up to basically a column underground. You have to put the steel pipe in so that you can hold the concrete all together around the reinforcing steel.
Okay. And we had to do that to every?
Every single one. Every single one.
And we did know that there was that potential?
We knew there was the potential for it. We anticipated we might have it on half of them. We had them on all of them, so.
Is that going to be similar to a situation that we'll have with, say, Tennyson or Waco High?
That's a great question. We finished all the piers at Tennyson. We had a few nowhere near what we had planned for. And the same thing at Waco High School.
Thank you.
You bet.
Great question, thank you, Mr. Patton. Are there any other questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you, Mrs. Barretta. Mrs. Barretta, you have got quite a number of items to present here. Okay, number 10. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the approval of guaranteed maximum price, number one, for Mazonic Construction for South Waco Elementary, additions and renovations.
So in our last meeting, you know, we revised the project budget. And this team has been super busy working on getting this first GMP package out. I think we talked a little bit about last time that we're using multiple GMP packages so that we can get the work going quicker. Especially at South Waco, in this particular case, it allows Mazonic Construction to begin relocating utilities, getting them out of the way, because the building has to go where the utilities are. So, you know, each construction manager at risk has their own approach to the best way to build the building. And this is what GMP 1 is making possible for South Waco. Mazonic Construction is actually represented here today by Sam Blunt and Jonathan Kazanas.
Okay.
We had Mazonic reported really good participation of subs on this first GMP. And they're 100% local on this one. And then the amount of this GMP 1 is lower than the budgeted amount. In other words, you know, when we're pricing it, we determine, we ask the general contractors to determine, where should we be looking on bid day? You know, if we've got to stay in budget and, you know, the 24 million is the top, then what should this first number be? Because you don't want to approve more and know you're in the hole on the second one, right? So this one was well below what was projected to be. So we're tracking in a positive direction. We are over our original project budget, yes. But because we've revised it, we have a new project budget. Because the board approved that at the last board meeting.
How much under are we from the projected budget?
Oh, gosh. I'm going to reach over there and grab one of the Mazonic people to, can you answer that question for me? Yes. How much? Eighty-five thousand.
A great start.
Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to consider discuss, take appropriate action regarding approval of guaranteed maximum price, number one, for Mazonic Construction, South Waco Elementary, additions and renovations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Grant, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
Uh, no.
I do want to commend Mazonic for getting 100% subcontractors that are local. That is really important to our board and for coming under budget. I think that's always a good start. And I was really pleased to see South Waco getting that new gym. I got really excited when I saw that in there, so. Okay, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And last but not least, item number 11. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding approval of guaranteed maximum price, number one, for BWC Education Group for Kendrick Elementary.
Yes, so BWC Education Group is represented here tonight as well. Denton Klein and Mr. Wright, yes, yes. So this one also, BWC reported really good, robust subcontractor participation. For example, on their demolition, they sent, for the demolition contractors, they sent out 32 invitations and they got 11 responses, which is really good. And so they are also tracking lower than the projected number for this scope of work. This includes the demolition, it also includes relocation of utilities and an allowance for expediting HVAC and electrical purchases, as well as the elevator. Because we've had issues with the elevator in other places, so we're getting that thing purchased early. Their subcontractor participation local right now on this scope of the work is about 60%. And, but realize that this is only a portion of the job. You will notice it's considerably a larger number. So it's just a lot more scope of work than Mazonic's covering right now.
Okay, hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory? Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton? Yeah. Ms. Barretta, do you know by chance how much lower?
Seven hundred thousand below the projection.
Seven hundred thousand, sounds great. Sounds really nice. So thank you so much. And that is a great start. So really, really appreciative of that. And excited for the new Kendrick. Can't wait to see that.
Will we run into the same thing with this casing thing with?
Well, we're planning to accommodate it if we do. So.
We don't know.
We don't know yet. I mean, yes, I don't believe we had any significant water identified. But the water table around here is kind of movable and unpredictable. And if we get a lot of rain, you know. We always do account for it.
It's kind of like getting your house remodeled. You never really know what you get until they start tearing everything down. Okay, hearing that, I will, what am I doing? A vote. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Barretta, and thank you for coming here when you were feeling under the weather. We'll move on to item number 12. 2023 State Testing and Accountability Update, Ms. Bell.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to update you for where we stand right now with state testing and accountability and remind you of how the system works and how we're rated and talk to you about some building issues and some problems that we've had with the way that the refresh has happened for accountability. Okay, so how are campuses evaluated in the 2023 system? It's the same model we've been following since the A through F system came into play. There are three domains. First is student achievement. Second, 2A, is growth. 2B is relative performance, where a campus is compared to other schools with similar ECO DIS percentages. And then domain three is the, domain three is 30% of the overall rating, but it is 100% of the federal rating. So we get the better of, it's got that little chart there. We do a best of best of to get the final rating. So whatever is better in domain two, 2A or 2B, then you compare domain two's higher number to domain one's higher number. Whichever is higher, that's 70% of the rating. And the other is always 30% of the rating. But closing the gaps can be confusing because closing the gaps is 30% of the state's rating, but it is 100% of the federal rating. Where federal money and school improvement labels come, they come from domain three. There are state labels, but consequences and things like that come from domain three. Okay, so how will the campuses be evaluated in the 2023 system? We will have, to calculate the final A through F score for each domain, there's a formula. And that's where we get the raw score. So I'm going to walk you through each. For example, with CCMR, it's the percentage of students who earned a point, at least one point, on the criteria. For STAR scores, you'll see it's a mixture of approaches, meets, and masters levels. So each domain has a calculation of the actual raw data. And then TEA takes the raw scores and they scale them. So the best way I explain this to people, it's like curved grades, you know? I'm going to announce this to the world, but I was doing very poorly in high school and precal. I had like a 30, and I didn't know why. But when my grade came out, it was a 90. And I was like, okay, I learned. Sometimes teachers curve grades, especially professors, right? So that's kind of what the scaling is, because it's not a predictable pattern. It's not like it's 10, 20, 30, 40 goes up here. Sometimes it's 12, 28, 52, 70. It's not consistent in its patterns for how it scales. And in the bottom, it's not the same scaling for every domain. It's also not the same scaling for every school type. So the scale system you use for elementary is not the same scale system you would use for the high school. So it's that far down differentiated into its pieces. So let's go through domain one, which is student achievement. For elementary and middle schools, this is 100% STAR scores. For the high schools, it is 40% STAR scores, 40% college, career, military-ready, and 20% graduation rate. And I'm going to refresh your memory on all these pieces as we go through. But I will say that military-ready is coming back into CCMR this coming year, because the CCMR graduation rate is always a year behind. So this year, we're getting rated on the class of 2022. Next year's rating in August is the class of 2023 that just left us, which is the class where military enlistment can count. And I'm happy to say we have 24 students for military enlistment. So we were able to get the documentation and get that back into our statistics as we've had it before. Okay, so for elementary and middle schools, the score comes from the results of the subject area tests for STAR, STAR Spanish, and STAR Alt 2 altogether bundled. And STAR Spanish, we've had an increase in the amount of students taking it. It's the same test, it's just translated. So in elementary, it's there. So we've had a lot of success and we've seen a lot of increases in our STAR Spanish performance. So that's kudos to Ms. Benson and her department for really expanding. And with the bilingual education coming up, I think that's only going to get stronger for her. But for high schools, the score comes from the result of the subject area tests. That's the EOCs and the STAR Alt 2 EOCs. But high schools have an additional measure. There's a group of kids that are called accelerated testers. And these are students who took Algebra I in eighth grade. By law, by federal law, a student must have a math score in high school. Well, Algebra I's the only EOC. So the 12th grade each year is analyzed. And any student who had an eighth grade Algebra I score now must have an SAT or ACT math score. And of course, TEA took the scale scores for the SAT and ACT and made approaches, meets, and masters. So those students folded in. We had about 60 students this year fold into the two high schools. But they don't use that until the 12th grade. So the school has time to go through it. So it's taken us some time to get used to this system because with mobility, kids are moving in and out all the time. But just so you know, the high schools are held accountable for those students as part of their math data. But for them, the STAR scores is only 40% of their overall rating. So what do they do? We do the percent of approaches grade level or above, the percent of meets or above, and the percent of masters. So these are averages, and then we average it again. So we divide by three. And then we scale it for whatever letter grade it is. And I remind you that the scale is not the same for elementary, middle, and high school. So what's the cut for a C in one of them would not be the cut in another. So that's STAR scores. That remained unchanged. TEA did not change its methodology. TEA did not change the cuts that they've used for the past five years for domain one. Of course.
And this is just for anybody who knows the answer to this. Do other states do this? I mean, I just think any industry, any business, any sports team that would measure performance in this way, I mean, I understand it, but it's still unbelievably confusing.
I know that way back in days yonder, when A through F was being built, that they did pub, TEA did publish out other states' systems that had been approved by the Department of Ed. that they did pub, TA did publish out other states' systems that had been approved by the Department of Ed that they felt like would work, given the law that outlined the A through F criteria, to put the both together. So we're still in a place of limbo because technically the federal rating is required to have at least one other data point besides test scores. And we haven't figured out what that is. So TA has suggested before chronic absenteeism should be a measure in accountability. So we look at other states to compare, but we are bound by the law that framed up this A through F system and what has to be in it.
But that's.
Mm-hmm.
Can't speak to the formulas for other states, but we like all of these methodologies in the state of Texas right now. And that came about with this A through F system. And then, you know, it used to be a lot simpler. And you could understand what you were looking at. And now you really have to understand the formula that got you the results. It makes it so, like you said, confusing.
Well, and also, I'm sorry, add on, but teachers used to be able to disaggregate their data.
Absolutely.
And that's really where parents and teachers really need this data to know where their kid is and what their kid needs. But with this crap, there is no way that a teacher can disaggregate this data without your help and a slew of mathematicians at central admin.
Yeah.
So this data is not relevant to daily classroom intervention and in, in, in success.
And I have some examples for you of where you're absolutely right, that the system, the student is showing great gains, and the system says they didn't grow at all.
You make a really great point because Mrs. Bell is able to do this work, having done this for a while, and she understands it forward and backwards and can maneuver it. Whereas everyone else has to sit down and follow step by step to get there, right? And then ask Denise Bell if you're doing it right. Because she's, she teaches other people, and a lot of districts don't have someone like Ms. Bell to do this. They have to wait on some of the software programs that are calculating it for them. So you saw many districts that had their raw data, and we had our raw data. We had to wait on Ms. Bell to finish calculating it. But some districts had to wait on software companies to do whatever it is to, to adjust their software, to, to calculate the numbers. And then they were having some struggles within those systems, and they didn't know what they had either. So that's just, that's how, that's how complicated it is.
That score should be used to determine mastery, non-mastery, or growth. And there is no way that a teacher in this district or a principal in this district, without your help, can do that. And therefore, what are we doing? How are we helping the individual Jim Patton, who is in Yolanda Williams' classroom and is struggling, but you don't know absolutely according to the test where I'm struggling and where I'm growing? Based off whatever test questions the TEA decides that year is appropriate.
There you go. I'll just take lots of vitamin C, stay hydrated so that I'm available for everybody. It'll, it'll be good.
But that's, that's a simple answer, though, is that a district would need a software company.
I don't rely on software.
To tell them if a student achieved or had academic achievement in their class that year.
It's pitiful.
I do, and the principals will tell you, I do have them lean into screener data levels because if those things go up, the thinking goes up, the student has the ability. But we can only control the test so much, right? And what it's presented as and how TEA uses that score. So we try to match data points and triangulate. That's really important to me. If the star score is off, but the kid has great screener data, the kid is not one test. So we wouldn't, that student wouldn't necessarily be considered remedial because their other data points are showing us they're doing just fine. They just may be a student who does not test well. And I just took my own son on college visits, and all the colleges we visited said, test optional. They don't even need your SAT score. We want to know who you are as a whole. So that was almost different for my world.
So Ms. Bell, Dr. Ken Cannon, when these, when the STAR test is given, and I know in the past, and I'm, considering I knew, I want to make sure that I'm saying this right. In the past, STAR and TACS was always testing a year ahead of content area. Is it still doing that now?
No, they're, they're measuring the student expectations for grade level that the state has published, excuse me, I have a mint in my mouth, but, no, it's measuring the curriculum.
For that grade level?
For that grade level.
Because in the past, that was not always so.
Yeah, no, it's grade level, Texas, Texas essential knowledge and skills, TEES. Yeah.
But the cuts are not flat. So a parent might think, okay, my child scores meets. They must have like, what, a 70 or 80 on the test? The test never does percents. So percent of questions or points is irrelevant to the actual cuts for scoring approaches, meets, and masters.
And a teacher can still look to see which student expectations and what, you know, how the class did overall and which areas they need to focus on. But to be able to calculate a campus or a district rating is where, where it gets really complicated. And it slows us down and takes a lot of time.
Okay, so next is graduation rate, which is 20% of our high school rating. And 60%, for the high schools, 60% of their rating always comes from the past. So 20% of that is graduation rate, 40% is CCMR. This is the class of 2022. So we changed the system. The commissioner is adapting a system for our 2023 ratings, but utilizing the class of 2022. And again, those phantom targets, it's kind of like, where are we supposed to be with the class of 23? And now the class of 23 is gone. So we just do the best we can to improve, and you're going to see we're making improvements with these measures. Graduation rate is the percent of students who graduated within four years. So the term cohort is what we use. Kids are followed from the day they enter high school. They are flagged in PMS as that grade level, and they are to graduate within that time period. The best percent is chosen from the four-year, five-year, or six-year graduation rates. This year, that represents the classes of 22, 21, and 20. Because we can have kids who stay with us longer than the four years, and they, as long as they're re-enrolled and finished, they graduate. So, and this is mostly true for our special education students who stay longer than four years with us. They are flagged in the system that they are staying for their IEP, so they are not counting against us. But when they graduate, we do get the credit for those students. The best percentage, though, is scaled for a letter grade, and for the most part, graduation rate scales backwards. So if you have a 90% graduation rate, it will scale to a D. Those were lifted. The graduation cut points were increased because the commissioner said the classes of 2019 and 2020 had more graduates. Therefore, we're graduating more kids, so we need to lift the percentages.
Can I ask a question about the CCMR? Math is my sweet spot, but college, career, and military readiness. If you go into the military, as you said, you get one point. If you go to a college, does a student get a point?
We don't get, the student is, each child is one point. That's it.
Right.
But when we publish, when the TA publishes our reports, it gives us credit for all the percent of kids in the class who did that.
So when you, I understand the college and the military, what does it mean by career?
So I've got the criteria up here. So college ready is deemed to be the first few, the meeting TSI criteria, which are the tests. That's TSI A2, which is the Community College Test, and then, of course, SAT ACT. Or if students do not achieve college ready on those, the college prep class is what we give them. The college prep class, a lot of people know adults who took the Accuplacer, and they couldn't pass it. So that when they went into community college, they had to take remedial classes. That's what the college prep is for our students. It's, and it's free with us. So for our students, even if they don't necessarily make college ready, they can be less remedial as they leave us. So we have that system. Dual credit is a college readiness. A three or better on an AP class is an AP exam. And then an associate's degree while in high school, that's our accelerate program. Graduating with an IEP or workforce ready, this is when we get into the career. These are students who, due to severe disabilities, stay with us longer and graduate in an IEP. But when they graduate with us, the art committee determines if that child is as employable as they physically, mentally, or intellectually, or emotionally can be, right? So it's an art decision there. Then if a current special education student graduates with what's called an advanced diploma, which is just an endorsement at the distinguished level, that's considered career ready because most of the endorsements are CTE-based. So these are programs of study, such as Guam and Guaca, and now our PTEC, but the audiovisual academies we have, the culinary academies we have. Then a Level 1 or 2 workforce certificate, we've never had a student do that. It's, those are things that you would go and earn at TSTC. So students who do that within the first few weeks of college, first semester of college, we get credit back. But those are very different and highly specialized for professionals. So I've never seen it in ours, and most of our surrounding districts, I've always looked to see, does anybody have one of these? I've just not seen it because kids can't, there's a lot of rules around the age you have to be with certain professional tests. And so our kids are not going to make that in time for us to get the credit for it. So, and then finally, our one that's most career ready is earning an industry-based certification. And the criteria for this one will change as well. So industry-based certifications, you can see I have a chart there for you. Just earning it was the thing that got us credit for a student being career ready. The commissioner did a couple of things with this section. The first thing he did was if the industry certification does not align with a set of CTE courses, a program of study, then he took it out. And this year, he put a cap on how many people. So Google Analytics is the biggest example. People were just having the kids do a little course, do Google Analytics. And it's not at the level Google Analytics is meant to be for professionals. But the kids were passing that test or Adobe. And the kids didn't take any classes necessarily for it, but we were getting CCMR. We in Waco, we see, we're not doing that. So that did not affect us. Ours were aligned with programs of study. So there are the welding, the nursing, all of those pieces are aligned to course content. So we were ready for this change in particular. So this year, they just have to earn the IBC. And by this year, I mean 2023's accountability for the class of 2022. Again, using last year's data, the students have to have just the industry certification. So for the classes of 22 and 23, it just wrote on the way it was. You just have to have the certification. But if you look, our current, the accountability year for 2025 is the seniors in the building now. And those students, they can earn the industry certification, but we will not get credit for it if they have not earned at least a Level 2 course. So they have to have passed a class that matches the pathway in the IBC. If you look, the class of 2025, our juniors, they earn an IBC. They actually have to become what's called a concentrator, which is where they have two or more classes. So we have to track this much more intensely. It also locks students in because if a student is taking it and is like, I thought I liked this, but I would like to try law enforcement or education, it's going to have an effect. I wouldn't say we wouldn't do it because they're children, we're going to do its best. But it does have an effect in our accountability and on our CTE funding. And then finally, the class of 2026, if you can believe it, that's our sophomores. They're going to have to be a completer. They're going to have to have the three or more credits with the four classes.
Do all of our CTE classes currently offer IBCs?
At the end of each program of study, yes. There's an IB, there's an industry certification that matches, but the kids don't take those till their junior or senior year because they're more professional-based tests.
That's in a program of study, but any individual course, CTE courses with IBCs, I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, some of the, the Level 2 will do it, but it's mostly in that level, which you can imagine with welding, the certification test would be at that higher level. But if a student's advanced in it, then at Guam, they might say, okay, as a junior, he can take that test. He can take it now and do dual credit welding now. So it's the level of the class, really, for the intensity of the training they get, which leads to how much better they can do on industry-based certifications.
Do they have to be enrolled in those classes? I'm just thinking of a kid is CTE kid in one class but can pass the Adobe.
The IBC.
IBC, can, are they, can they do that? Is it, are we getting credit for?
I guess theoretically, they could. I don't think that we've had students that go that way, that are just like, hey, man, I'd love to take an industry-based certification. Because we don't get reimbursed from TEA if the student doesn't pass it. So some of these are quite pricey and require certain restrictions for the actual assessment. Since all of them are the assessments for actual professionals. They're not something that the state makes or anything like that. They're literally those tests in those professions. So we can find out that, though. It's not typical. Usually, it's a part of the class that they'll do towards the end of the four-year sequence. At least in their junior year is usually the earliest I've seen it.
That's a good question, though. We'll, we'll check on that.
So that criteria changed. And then the criteria for earning an IBC will change over time. So we're going to have to track things more intensely. And then for CCMR, the cuts for the letter grades were increased to apply this year. So previously, in accountability 2022, an A was, the cut was a 61. Now the cut for an A is an 88, which means 88% of the students have to have an industry-based, have to have something from the career, college, or military readiness. Just one point at least. Our kids have a lot of points. If you think about it, a student who's doing AP art may also have the industry-based cert, and may also pass TSI. So our kids do this in multiple ways, but every kid we must look at for at least one point.
And this was, is a big piece of the lawsuit argument. This wasn't communicated out to school districts. And obviously, the kids already graduated, and there's, there was no way that we could have impacted and worked to achieve a higher score. But these are drastic increases, as you can see, really impacted us too, even though we had gains in CCMR.
Yes. And so the cut for a B was a 48. And do you see, this kind of proves what I said before about the incremental, it's not the same going up, same amount. Because a D was a 36, but a C was a 39. Just three more points, and you change the letter grades. But now, those are all 88, 78, 64, and 51. So I'm here to tell you happily that our CCMR raw scores are up. The actual performance of our children is increased. We have more students achieving CCMR from that class of 2022. So we were just working on improving. We were never going to say, oh, it's enough if we just get a B. We want, the more students we have that achieve these goals, the more we're helping just the city of Waco. You know, their employability and their readiness for college and for higher-level careers. So here, Waco High School in 2022, they have a, they had a 53%, and that scaled to an 84, which was a B for them. This year, they're up to 66% of the class of 2022. That will scale to a 71. So the scale score will make it look like our grade goes down. But actually, the percent of students who achieved it went up. And under the old rules, that 66 would have been a 92. For university, in 2022, they had 51%, and it scaled to an 82. In 2023, again, their raw score, the amount of students who were CCMR-ready was 60%, but that will scale to a 67. And under the 2022 rules, this would have been a 90. So it seems like our CCMR is down. But what I keep telling the principals and teachers and, is the clear understanding of the fact that we actually are increasing the amount of students. And that was the class of 2022 before we even knew this was a thought that the commissioner was having. So the class of 2023 will only continue to be stronger. So we're just working, we're doing the work to have more students career, college, and military ready in as many ways as possible. And, but the grade is lower. Yeah. So if I were a parent, I didn't understand that this backside of it, it would look like, wow, less kid, they have less kids career, career, college, and military ready, when in fact, they, we don't. But when you open up the public page, you're just going to see that letter splash. And you're going to think that you have an idea of what this data means. And Brazis?
I have a question.
Okay.
So the 60%, so that means 40% of the students at a university weren't college, career, military-ready when they graduated?
They did not do any of the criteria required for a point.
But, but they are, I'm just trying to see, like, is it the testing that's saying that they aren't college, career, military-ready? Or are they not able to attend college or join the military?
So we look at each of these, like, we look at our AP students, and we say, okay, a lot of, this percent of students got twos and ones instead of a three. What can we do to improve pre-AP and AP score? So for each of these pieces, that department kind of looks at it and says, where can we do better on each, every piece? And so then that lifts up the number for all students. So we have, for example, special education has made huge gains in the percentage of students who are graduating with endorsements, which means they're staying, they're finishing those courses of professional programs of study that they're going out with more skills than if they just did the basic. Which means they're staying, they're finishing those courses of professional programs of study that they're going out with more skills than if they just did the basic diploma. They would not be ready for community college classes or a, a professional career.
But this doesn't mean that maybe that forty percent uh of, a student who didn't get a point could go to work for an electrician.
Oh, yeah.
And have a career and then get licensed. So it doesn't mean that forty percent of the students aren't ready to have a job. It just means that they didn't get a point in the way that the state.
Yes, correct.
So the, the forty percent of students didn't get a point in any of the categories, college, career or military ready?
Not military, because the TA doesn't, hasn't allowed us to use military for a few years. So it's just the career and the college pieces.
So it's only measuring the indicators that were on that previous chart.
Correct. The only way it's measuring career readiness truly is industry-based certifications and level one and two certificates. Not a student's capability to, you know, be employable, work. There's a lot of soft skills to being employed. It's not measuring any of that. And for Brazos, they were at zero percent in twenty twenty-two. We have no idea how Brazos will be rated because TEA has still not released the methodology for an AEA. But to show you, they have eight percent. So they've begun to implement some things in their systems. And um that will probably increase as more students come from these, we don't wait till their senior year, junior year to get that. If a kid is in, again, you saw how many students were scored a four, a three or better on AP Spanish language, right? So that's a, that's a lift. That student, we could easily say, got our point. But no, that may have been in their freshman year. So now what else are we going to do? So we try to make the kids as well-rounded as possible, as many ways they can be CCMR-ready is what we're going for.
Not counting the military, are these students required to either be in an AP track or in a CTE track? What other group? Cause there's lots of students that are, and I, I guess it could be dual credit.
We have endorsement system.
The, the diploma now is an endorsement-based system and students are capable of free. I've seen students leave Waco ISD with four endorsement areas. So the, one is liberal arts, um which is the dual credit, the kind of the college bound. Um or the traditional four by four liberal arts. Um one of them is public service, which includes things like the um Guaca. It includes, it's like a quiz I'm getting, Guaca, any of the law enforcement pieces we have, our Future Heroes Academy, which we're building. And the Future Educators Academy, that would be a public service endorsement. Um or in public service, four years of JROTC is considered an endorsement. Um for business, we have the marketing, the audio visual, we have culinary, we have. They, the marketing and finance is different at the two high schools, so that, so a kid could do the liberal arts four by four classes or do some dual credit. And then at the same time, do the classes for, let's say, um the marketing endorsement. That ends with accounting too and an industry-based certification. So the kid can have that career side, but that college side. So I almost like that because then the kids don't have to choose a track, right? They can be all the way across.
What, what's happening to the forty percent of students who aren't at least getting one point sometime during their four years? Like, where y'all are tracking it, are they advised to be in certain classes so they can get those CCMR points? Or how, how do they end up not getting uh a point at any point? It seems like it's a lot of opportunities to get a point that considers you CCMR. So I'm just wondering how does that big of a percentage not get a point at any time?
I think systemically it's going to take time for the, the kids to be stronger for our TSI performance. We have more kids in the college prep class than we've had before because we want them to be able to bridge over into at least community college. So for each of these, it's, the forty percent is broken into parts and each department kind of says, well. Okay, that one was our industry cert and did they fail it? Because for some of our students, this is an adult-level test that doesn't have what, what the STAR test has, for example, like accommodations. And it'll read aloud to you and all of that. These are professional certifications. They, they expect certain things. So we have students maybe take it more than once, or we consider that, yes, the student's employable. And they didn't pass the industry-based certification, we might administer it again, or we might just say that student is employable. And we're just going to have to get stronger in the test. So we would look at like the welding test and look at the students who didn't pass and improve instruction. So over time, it's just going to take some time to get that forty percent lower. But sometimes students just need, we, we still do have, the class of twenty twenty-four were fresh, twenty twenty-four. Are the first set of high school seniors who were not in high school during COVID. And we had a great deal of students who were pulled off and became the breadwinners for their family from the classes of twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. So sometimes just getting them to have the high school diploma was the win we had to accept, that they might not reach these other things. But at least we have them graduating high school to be a stronger earner for the family.
Well, two students could go, I'm sorry, I'm trying to wrap my head around all of this. Two students could go through the welding track together, do well in the classes together, both graduate. But one not pass the final certification exam. And so they've done well in school, they've graduated, they're going to get a job in welding.
Well, and typically those students go off to.
The final exam, which is a industry-based thing, not a graduation.
Right, it's, it's an industries setting the standard, but a lot of our kids go off to TACC and they take classes there and they get it there. So we're setting them up to, to be successful in community college, technical school or in the workforce at least. You know, and we're not, we're not at a hundred percent, I'd love that, but we're at least, we're growing and at least at a stronger place. And we're looking at the kids who don't meet this and thinking about missed opportunities or why.
And so we're providing a foundation.
Yes. When you think about it, I've come to this board for the past couple of years with the attendance issues. It was just a struggle to get kids to come to school. So are you really ready to take the, the welding? We keep saying the welding test, but like the accounting tests they take, are you really ready for that? But at university, you might have worked in the bank. You don't have an industry-based certification, but you worked in the, in campus bank. And you have a good resume to take with you.
I was happy to hear about the, the adjustments that are made, because I do think the industry-based certification is huge. Cause you can't get a job if you don't have certification in a lot of these industries. So I think that is a huge part. So I'm glad to hear that we're adjusting this. Our kids can do better on those industry adult-level tests. Uh, cause that's what they're getting ready to go into after they leave us.
And we actually increased nine percentage points in IBC, industry-based.
Industry-based certifications individually, yes. Okay, so that's domain one, she says. Um, domain two has two parts, part A and part B, it's just job security, just saying. I don't know how my career got here. How is growth measured in twenty twenty-three? So this is the chart that we had um from TEA. Growth is measured now by what I call level jumping. They call it a transition table, but there are four levels to start. Did not meets, approaches, meets and masters. In the new way to gain points for students, they would have to move up a level. So in the original, they were going to do like three points if you go from failing to masters. That's a lot of pressure on student and teacher. So in this case, it's just um one point in each box or a half point if they maintain the level. And then on the side, they also gave us point two five bonus points for every kid who went from. Did not meets one year to passing the next year. So it's a quarter point we got extra. So students must now move up levels and moving up levels means scale score increases. So when we got the um EOCs early back in May, we were told by TEA that the scale scores on the new test. Would be very close to the current scale scores, so that it was reasonable to compare the two. When we got back the high school cuts from twenty-two to twenty-three, you can see, they were pretty much stable. Approaches was the same, meets was the same, and masters did some moving up and down. But it was stable. So that led us to believe that for three through eight, we were going to find the same thing, that the scale scores were approximately the same. So level jumping for the kids seemed reasonable. The progress measure is the old way. So it should actually say twenty twenty-two, but the progress measure is the old way they did it. And that was created by statisticians who studied the tests over time and said, if a kid makes this much growth here, this much growth here. Regardless of the performance level they have, they make that increase, they have made acceptable growth to continue moving on. So we used to have the gain scores, we had limited, expected and accelerated. And a lot of our campuses last year had a lot of students who were accelerated in this area. They were, the kids went above and beyond in scale score improvement. But um for scale scores, what happened was, I'm going to show you in a minute, is that there were in some areas. Um tremendous jumps in the scale score. They were not comparable. They weren't like fifteen points off. Some of them were two hundred point increases from one year to the next. For three through eight, every single test masters went up to very, so masters and meets was even. Further away to obtain for those students. So I gave you some examples here of what the two systems look like. So for the twenty twenty-three accountability, student A, in fourth grade, they scored a scale score of twelve forty-five. So that would have been last year's score on their reading. The year before that, they had a ten forty-five on third grade. So they went from a ten forty-five to a twelve forty-five. That is did not meets low for both. The student did not pass the exam, but they increased two hundred scale score points. That would have been accelerated growth by the twenty twenty-two standards. That is considered no growth at all. And each of these examples I'm about to do, um I want to relay to you, these are actual Waco ISD student examples. These are not Denise sat in a box and said.
No points for that student.
For that student, even though they had a two hundred point increase from one test to the other.
That student and that teacher worked with their, worked their rear end.
Is that, that information is being relayed back to the parent?
The parents are able to see the, the year to year. So a parent would have to kind of look at the, the scale score increase to see for themselves. Cause it's on their report.
Well, so the student would see, the student would know how much growth they had.
The student would have their whole history of scale score, but they would see did not meets, did not meets, no growth.
Report would, they, they would get back would say no growth. That's, that's fantastic.
Do, how much of a difference is, is that the first example you gave us? How much, I guess like if, if third grade, they got, you know, thirty questions right. Fourth grade, how many more questions did they get right?
So it wouldn't be questions. It's each question has um almost like a rigor weight in and of itself. So each question has like a value of how hard the question is after they do field testing. But to give, so it's not number of questions, but to help frame it for you, the most TEA asks students to grow. Any, the biggest progress measure in all years past was a hundred and three points. So in this case, this student's growing two hundred, which would have been considered accelerated before. The kid would have been like, you're accelerating growth, keep going, but now no growth. Student B, student B example was a seventh grader. They scored a sixteen ninety on math star, that would have been last year, and that's did not meet. But last year, the student scored a fifteen thirty-six when they were a sixth grader, which was approaches. So they increased a hundred and fifty-four scale score points, which would have been growth. But in fact, with the new transition table, they fell back a level, so they would be no growth. And they're now did not meet. And student C, student C is in the sixth grade, they scored an eighteen seventy on math star, which is meets. Last year, which would be, they scored um a seven twenty-four on the fifth grade test, that was masters. So this child increased a hundred and forty-six scale score points, but when their parent sees their score. It will look like their child fell back from masters to meets. But it's simply a matter of scale score. So with the new transition table, there would be no growth. But for um, for the student in the old system, they increased a hundred and forty-six scale score points. And they would have gotten masters growth because the old cut for masters would have applied. So they would, master students have to stay masters level. But you can see in this case, if you were a student or a parent looking at that, you're saying to yourself, well, you're not growing. What's, you're not doing the work. Like, and this is a sixth to seventh grader moving on, and so they may have that, that feeling of, well, what am I doing wrong?
It's a very high score for that grade level and subject area test. And they did well, they did well, and the campus doesn't get credit for their score. Because they didn't, they didn't jump high enough.
Yeah.
They dropped, but they're still very high achiever.
But they went from masters to meets.
Meets, at, at a high level of meets, and you don't get credit for them in the system.
I guess the state would say it's the student's fault for not being born a year earlier, probably.
I think, I think this is, what is most disturbing to me in this. Is the fact that these students are growing, and yet when they get their paper back. It says, you're falling behind. And we all know from working with kids, half the battle is convincing them you can do this. So when you start ingraining in these students, these thoughts of you're falling behind, you're not doing well. I mean, it is defeating for these students to have to overcome that. And so I think, honestly, I think shame on the state for putting this on our, on our teachers, for putting this on administrators. But more importantly, for putting this on our students.
And their families.
And their family. This is uh disingenuous. It is, and quite frankly, I think it's, it's political. Because it's, uh, we all heard what the governor said. And he, this, yes, there, there is a, a breakdown. And it seems to me some type of agenda to break um down our public schools, to break down our education system. To undercut the important work that is happening, the good work. That is happening in public schools in and throughout the state of this, in and throughout this state. And people are working hard, kids are working hard, families are working hard. And this to me seems incredibly disingenuous.
Teachers are working hard, especially for this kid, going back to your first example. Um, from twelve forty-five to, from ten forty-five to twelve forty-five, third grade to fourth grade. Stephanie, you know what, for tutoring in elementary, it is all hands on deck. It's everybody in a dishwasher. If you clean windows, come on in and help us, we're getting everyone.
Physical education teachers usually are helping.
Everyone is helping these kids and, and filling them with positive thoughts. You can do this. We believe you. We're helping you. We're going to get you there. And then they get this. And those teachers lied to me. I don't believe in myself. My parents are going to be ticked off. They're going to pull me out of Little League baseball to make me study, to punish me because I didn't do well enough. Even though I grew two hundred scale points.
So.
The one, you know, my daughter is training for a marathon, which to me is ridiculous and amazing at the same time. But the Ironman triathlon is a marathon in swimming, a marathon in bicycling and a marathon in, in running. And you have like fifteen or sixteen hours to finish the whole thing. And all these people are pacing themselves throughout the whole thing to know that I'm on track, I'm on track, I'm on track, to make it within sixteen hours. And it's almost like they've been training their whole life for this thing and about five miles out, they say, oh, we didn't mean sixteen hours. We meant twelve, you had to finish in twelve. And you're so far into the race that it's like, wait, wait a minute. This is not what I've been training for and you're asking me. And it seems like this is what we're doing to our teachers and kids is just in the middle of a rigorous, difficult journey. Um, changing the stopwatch, the test. Paradigm that just has no chance of success. I mean, there's literally, you can't run a one-minute mile, the last three miles. And so there's no chance of success. And that seems to be the intent of this. It seems to, to clearly communicate, we know that this isn't possible, but that's part of the plan because we want more people to fail.
And we did not know these cuts until this August.
Till mile twenty-four. Yeah, yeah.
So it was, again, as I said, Dr. Cannon, it's like a phantom goal. When we were trying to set, knowing the test was going to change. TA continuously messaged to us that the test would not be any harder and that the scale scores would be in the same kind of arena. So I went ahead and created a chart. Okay, I think this is what did not meets, high and low is going to be, and approaches high and low. So that when we took the interims and we had our Lexile Qantile data, so that we could make goals for kids. And you can see by those three kids alone, you can see that those goals had the output. The problem is, we did not know what the cut scores were until the test was graded and released, and that was in August.
That's a shame you don't know the target.
Yeah.
Before you take the test.
Kids and teachers had a target that I considered reasonable from TA's messaging. And when we got the EOC scores back in May, they stayed in the same arena. So I had no reason to think, when we got three through eight, two months later, that there would be the situation that there is. So our kids making that growth was positive for me. It's like, okay, so if it's going to stay in the same, somebody's two hundred kids. So our kids making that growth was positive for me. It's like, okay, so if it's gonna stay in the same, somebody's two hundred kids would have level jumped. And so that would have been amazing. We did the work. The problem is they just lifted all the stairs.
So are the kids, are they being like explained? Are they being walked through this? So if I do, if I, if I am one of the kids in the examples, and I do feel like, you know, I worked really hard and I didn't get um, kind of the target that I set with my teacher. Or is the teacher explaining to the student the difference and that they did show growth, but it might not look like that? Well, we're getting explained, our students and parents and teachers being explained this as well?
I think that, well, we've only had so much time to adjust to this. And um, I think teachers are having conversations with kids and goal setting right now. I pulled myself out of the mix. Dr. Kinghan and I discussed this. We, we're not gonna set accountability and star goals yet until everything is more certain. Because otherwise, I'm making leadership and teachers grind on goals, and it, it's hard on me because I gave them goals. And the goals didn't, they, they matched the old twenty twenty-two cuts, but they don't match the new one. And there was no way for me to see that coming. So what they're talking to kids about is their performance, but they're focusing more in the now. So they have data points from kids right now. They know, but we're not going to stress that star yet on kids because of this. This is gonna be hard to explain to the adults, the parents, about these jumps. And teachers are gonna have to wrap their mind around how, how big these jumps are. So for example, if you're the seventh grade, no, for math is the better example, seventh grade math alone from twenty twenty-two, look how much masters went up. So if you were a strong seventh grade math teacher, masters seventeen ninety-eight, you have your calibrated instruction. You were getting kids to masters, and you thought, oh, this kid's gonna get in the seventeen hundred, and now it's jumped to a nineteen sixty-five. So there was no way for us to know that that was coming. So I think, Mr. Davis, we're gonna take our time and pull back a little bit because we don't want the kids to invest their hearts in this because we know it's, it's an illusion. It's, it's not a hundred percent real. We're looking at the, the breakdown of their test. What SEs are they struggling with? And for their screen of data, if they're tier three, we're looking at their now score. So we're kind of using other pieces of this and other pieces of data to work with kids. And not really, because explaining a scale score to a kid is quite a struggle.
And these scores are based upon estimates of guidance that TA gave in the past, but we're waiting to October to see.
If they make changes.
If they make changes.
So I gave you the two slides, and everything in yellow is a jump from the past, right? But I gave you this slide as well. The last time we changed the test, TA acknowledged in that very first paragraph there, this is from twenty twelve when we switched from tax to star, they had, it was called a phase in. And that first sentence, "A phase-in period has been implemented for star performance standards to provide school districts with the time to adjust instruction, provide new professional development, and close knowledge gaps." So they did a three-year increment. They were like, okay, this is gonna jump to here, but it's gonna take three years, and we don't want the kids to feel like they're not growing. The phase in was not even a conversation this year.
They have always done a ramp up. For, I mean, when I first started teaching, and we've changed the state test, and they have always given you uh, years ramp up before they hit. Going back to what I was saying earlier, to what Jonathan was talking about, the marathon, I think was, is a great analogy. We've got kids who work their rear ends off, and the teacher's right beside them, pushing them. And boy, this is loud, or I'm loud because I'm getting wired, wired up. It's, it's unfair.
Completely.
That we cannot tell them. It's unfair that we're going to start requiring them to, to come back for tutoring. And we can tell them, you know, you're weak in, in calculation skills. Or you're weak in uh, parenthetical expressions. But we cannot use this test, which is the one and God only one that the state of Texas values to show them where they did wrong. And so I still say, even though we know from screener tests that kids have weaknesses, but if we're going to get them to pass this test, they need to see this test and see their mistakes and see where they went wrong. And TA is not giving us that opportunity. And therefore, we're putting kids in tutoring. And in tutoring, they're getting small group instruction. They're getting those holes filled. So what are, those holes that we fill, do we know that that's really gonna be tested? Because they don't test every T.
Well, and we can't, there's no way to measure the impact of the fact that the test itself was an entirely new format. A third grader writing an essay on the computer. Who thought that was a good idea, like? And that's the state test, and somebody rates that third grader's writing like, on top of, yes, all the children are on computers from three to EOC, so they, it was a hundred percent online this year. But it, they added in a writing component to the RLA, so all of the students had to write. I call it an essay for lack of a better word, a composition of some time. But third graders had to do this typing. And so that's like, I know my high school kid does this.
And how many of those students are taught.
Five words a minute.
Through the computer. No, we teach them face to face, but we're testing them and setting those little sweet little angels down at a keyboard and going, take the test until you're finished. Don't get up and leave until you've finished.
Which TA did remove the time limit last year, so you can't even, we had children who took five and six hours in elementary. They were probably emotionally exhausted, and their teacher was probably eternally grateful that they kept on trying. But I mean, as an adult, a five to six hour test, having to do all that, that's quite difficult, yes.
That's saying.
I, yeah, I.
So the commissioner has proposed, he, he did his pause last week, and he released in the, what's called the tag group where he, so he's revisiting domain two A growth. But all, all he's revisiting is the cuts for the letter grades. He is in no way revisiting the student scores. So the student scores in his mind are appropriate and they stand, but he said, okay, I'll give you leeway for, um, instead of using twenty to twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two together to create these cuts, I'm gonna use twenty nineteen. It, it's maybe at most a five percent difference to, between this moving up and down. But that's not the problem. The problem for growth for our students was not the domain and how many kids we got to grow. The heart of the problem here was the definition for growth that the commissioner created with a transition table. And then TA thought it was okay to utilize these scores. They didn't pause and say, look what happened. Let's, let's pause. They were used. And so his proposal for change does not change a student's score. Okay, and then we have the what-if calculations. So TA gave us growth what-if calculations. But again, the problem was they did growth off of twenty-one to twenty-two, and the scale scores were almost identical there. We had great what-if scores in growth because it was the same scale score. So the work we did worked, but it's not gonna change. Domain two B is relative performance. So we have a few campuses where their achievement was stronger than their growth. So this is the first time it's harder to get growth than achievement in the accountability system. Um, but some of our campuses did this, and it compares you on the graph to the ECO DIS. Changes to domain three is a lovely long slide that, again, assures me, um, job security. They are changing, essentially, they changed the targets, the groups, the targets for each type of campus, a four-point system. How growth is defined, they did targets there, and discussing whether or not TelPess writing was online. So the proposed cuts the commissioner's made um, this past week, and he shared with us today. He wants to change the targets for growth just for the interim. He wants to change the scale scores for domain three. Again, not, not touching the heart of the problem, which is student scores. He's changing the targets and changing the scale score. But the problem with proposing these changes is that this is domain three, so we must have the Department of Ed's approval to change this. So that will take some time. And then finally, finally, um, the district is no longer rated with its own data. We are uh, the composition of a weighted average of each of the domains. So I put up there just a reminder for you of the contribution of each of our campuses. So twenty-one percent of our rating comes from Waco High, seventeen percent comes from university. So basically, we take the scores for domain one and line them up and multiply by the weight and add up the points, and that's the district's rating.
So Carver and Indian Spring will be combined?
Yes. So secondary is our heaviest lift.
So that would be eight point three percent.
Okay, and the twenty twenty-three ratings are now delayed, as Dr. King Cannon told you before. So they'll be delaying the issuance of the final manual. So we still do not have the final accountability manual that says this is how exactly we will do it. We're waiting for that. And they're going to do further analysis of the cuts for domain two and domain three in reference to growth. But again, when they're talking about cuts, they're not talking about the student scores. They're talking about the cuts for us to get letter grades. That's what they're working on. So we will not get ratings any earlier than October thirteenth. And um, these are just suggestions and general outlines. So it did not, I did, Dr. King Cannon shared with me this email, and I went to my office and me and coffee and powdered donuts, we reshook this data out again with his proposed cuts. And um, it doesn't change very much. Doesn't change very much. But that just proves the heart of the problem for growth was not the cuts for accountability itself. The heart of the problem was the, what we expected students to do. Okay, any further questions?
I know that he, the commissioner doesn't sit in a tower by himself and make up all these changes and rules. He's not smart enough. But is there like an advisory team that's known and who is the group that's proposing this?
The commissioner brings his ideas to a group that's called TAG, his technical advisory group. And they're made up of people from different professions, policymakers, community people, and um, school people all together. They give him feedback, but ultimately, whatever feedback is given, he gets the ultimate decision of whether he agrees with that or not. So that's why I don't know, these changes he's saying that I shook out this morning were from the TAG group. They were proposals he made to that group. I don't know what that group said about those changes. And if they said this is not good, I don't know if he's gonna say, thank you for your opinion, I'm still gonna do what I want. Or if he's gonna take it under advisement. I don't know what his choices will be, but ultimately, he is, he's gonna be the one to make the final choice.
Dr. King Cannon or Denise, where did Mike Marath come from?
He's a, a computer software, uh, he was on the Dallas ISD School Board.
He's a computer software person.
And yet Denise Bell is calculating his ratings.
Carl, do you need help on spelling that? Please put that in your article. How ridiculous. How absolutely insane. You don't even have a, an education person.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Okay. It really is, it really is shameful.
Comment, I don't know, um, I don't know what our plan as a district is to, to get this information out clearly to our um, our parents and students, uh, but I think our teachers need to be praised for the work they're doing. The kids need to be praised for the work they're doing. Um, but whatever message that is, I think it needs to be broad, and it needs to be loud because I can almost guarantee the state is gonna be quick to point at districts and show how poorly they've done when they've actually shown growth.
Yeah, thank you. We, um, Wendy Sled did a really nice job of putting together some slides for social media to celebrate our results and the progress that we've made in a number of areas, and so I want to thank her for that. And it's really good data. I hope you have a chance to, to follow those. I think she's pushed out three of those so far, maybe four. Four of those, and um, they're, they're really good, and I noticed that people are paying attention, and they're getting some likes and some comments. Also, I mentioned some of the successes. We didn't have all the information for convocation, but I, I shared what I could with what I had at convocation to really, you know, celebrate growth that our kids are making. And we'll continue to do that. So thank you. It's important, it's an important message because a lot of people have worked really hard here to do the right thing, putting structures and systems in place to help kids grow and nurturing them, and we're, I'm really proud of them for the work they've done.
Yeah, I think we all are proud of our students and our teachers for, and our administrators for all their hard work. Thank you, Dr. King Cannon. Um, moving on to item number thirteen, Grow Your Own, Dr. Lopez.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. King Cannon, members of the board. Melissa Cox and I are here to present to you, um, Grow Our Own program, which I hope will not be as depressing as what you just went through. Try to make it a little bit more light.
A little more upbeat.
I, I do want to start this presentation with a little bit of background information, just so that um, you all know and our community knows how we actually got to this point. In the fall of twenty nineteen, the administration hosted a three-day design thinking workshop focusing on teacher retention. At that time, the district's turnover rate was approximately twenty-six percent. The outcomes of the three-day event included in-depth conversations with teachers about why uh, they leave Waco ISD and the development of relationships with local higher education leaders from McLennan County Community College, Texas State University, and Texas Tech University. In addition, the idea developed, and the idea to develop a PTEC Academy for teaching and learning emerged as a strategy to grow a diverse pool of teaching candidates to serve in Waco ISD. Tonight's presentation will highlight portions of Waco ISD's current Grow Our Own initiative strategies, which include our opportunity culture model, which launched in fall of twenty twenty-one in five campuses. And in this year, uh, we have total ten campuses in that uh, uh, strategy. Uh, Future Educators Academy launched in fall of twenty twenty-two. Our Turner Certification Pathway, which we will give an update on this evening, launched in the fall of twenty twenty-one. And then our bachelor's degree program, which we will talk to you about this evening, is anticipated to launch in the spring of twenty twenty-four. While this presentation will focus on uh, the development of the pipeline for our teachers, we will also touch on some areas where we're focusing on future leaders within our district. Our leadership team just recently completed an eighteen-month leadership pipeline development program with the Haldor Center. So we'll talk a little bit about those strategies that we're using to build along the way. But I want to get into some national data with you first. And so, and then I'll bring it down to our Texas data. Nationally, what we're looking at is by twenty twenty-five, estimated need for teachers is going to be at three hundred thousand uh, people. The supply by then is estimated to be a hundred thousand. So nationally, the shortage is going to get larger. If you look at Texas, and this is from the Charles Butt um, Foundation, the percentage of teachers considering leaving is at the highest level in three years. Seventy-seven percent of Texas teachers are looking at leaving the profession if they haven't already. Additionally, seventy-five percent of teachers are seriously um, considering leaving because of some other stressors. Um, but pre-pandemic, that was in twenty twenty, it was at fifty-eight percent. So there's been a large shift of folks considering to leave uh, the profession. As we get a little bit deeper into just Texas, you'll see that the major source of why people are leaving is teacher stress. And within our own South Central area, seventy-four percent, which is the largest out of all parts of the state of Texas, come from this area in the south. Uh, but when you put it all together, um, that's where that is. And then our highest stress, our, our, our demographic for teachers across the state of Texas, um, the highest stress level for Hispanics was higher than twice as much as our, their white counterparts at, um, and at thirty-five percent, while what their white teachers were at eighteen percent. Our African-American teachers were at twenty-four percent. Other factors which you just heard that are contributing to uh, not just the stress of teaching, are standardized tests. You just got a reason there. But the other two, which I think really go hand in hand with what you just heard, were uh, the teachers having to deal, the educational system at, at large having to deal with student mental health and emotional well-being. And the other part that um, I didn't have to grow up with, but what kids are having to grow up with and teachers are having to grow up with is the teachers feeling that they have to keep their students safe every day from an active shooter. The one thing I did want to mention is that stress is caused by the shortage within campuses. Teachers are having to cover more, their classroom sizes are larger because of the shortage, there are many more people who are in the classrooms who are not certified, they're going through an ALT CERT program, or their emergency permit currently, or they're long-term subs, and on a deficiency plan, working to get their, get into an alternative certification program. Attrition across state of Texas, if you look over the years, there's a lot of years there, but all the way from 2011 to 2020, it was a ten percent attrition rate across the state of Texas. It was lower in the pandemic year, of course, but where it really jumped was the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to thirteen, almost fourteen percent of attrition. So you see that past the pandemic, there's been a lot going on there. Other reasons of mental health as well go along with that. For our own data, as we look at it, of course, twenty-two, twenty-three is not going to be here until the TAPER report is released from the state. Prelimarily, if we look at our, what we're looking at this year, just what we see, is that our turnover rate for Waco ISD at a thousand, a thousand and one teachers is twenty-two percent. So we did go down on our estimate, one percent. But if you look over all the years of Waco has been mostly in the upper twenties of turnover since 2014. Last year, so our data points, and what's interesting about this is we hired two hundred and forty-eight teachers last year. Eighty-six of those, and we talked about that at our last meeting, there were eighty-six of them were on emergency permit. Sixty-four of those folks did not complete the requirements to become full-certified teachers, which means they did not return this year. And nineteen of the teachers that were in an ALT CERT program, that were in a ALT CERT program that kept up with them, that really worked with them, worked them through their modules so that they could get ready to test at the end, all nineteen of those did complete the requirements, and they did come back this year as full-certified teachers for us. This year, as of August thirtieth, we had hired two hundred teachers. We drastically dropped our emergency permit numbers to thirty-five, and that is due in part because we held the line on not hiring emergency permits till the very end that we needed.
Plus, we had a sign-on bonus for...
And the sign-on bonus helped a lot in there. Again, we have forty teachers currently in an alternative certification program, and so hopefully, we can get them through all at a hundred percent, so they're fully certified for us for the, for the next year. Yes? So I think that's a difficult question to answer, because it, it really is complexed. One, we meet with them and have them sign a letter with us that they will fulfill their requirements along the way. We meet with them in September, we meet with them again right before, maybe the beginning of December, so that they stay on track with their modules. We work with their ACPs, and then we meet again with them in February, because that's really the timeframe for them to finish up, to go through the modules. The number one reason that those sixty-four did not complete is they didn't complete their modules for their ACP.
And their multiple ACP programs.
Yes, there's a lot of them. And so when we work with the ACP, the ACP is assuring us that they are working with their candidate. What we can't help is whether the candidate does the work. Yes, they have to be in a program. Now, what ends up happening with the emergency permit folks is that they're not fully in the program because they've not finished a few things. Whether they didn't pass the test they needed to pass, let's say they didn't pass the STR, the Science of Teaching Reading, and they have to retake it. They're not gonna get their letter of eligibility from the ACP, but what they will get, so that we can get them on emergency permit, is a deficiency plan that the organization will help them work through, so they can get their statement of eligibility, so they can get an internship certificate to be fully enrolled. Yes. And they have, they have folks that are to come visit with them as the liaison between the, the program, right, to keep them going forward. I think part of the issue is there are so many programs now, and many of them are online, and so if you're not inclined as an adult to understand how to work through the online process and classes, you inherently fall behind.
And working full-time.
That's it. That's the other piece, is the...
You're learning how to be a teacher.
A job, on, on the job.
Do we allow them to have a certain amount of time to get the modules done? I know, just 'cause like you said, they are working full-time on top of this, so do we allow them, you know, off-period, you know, every now and then once a quarter or something to kind of help? Because sixty-four out of eighty-six is a lot of people.
It's a lot of people.
Wondering, like, are we providing anything different to this new batch of thirty-five that we didn't offer last year? I'm just trying to see.
We're not offering an off-time for them. Within our ALT CERT program pathway through MCC, there is release time built in for them through our program that we've built. And I'll let Mrs. Cox talk about that a little deeper, on how we go forward with them to really help support them. For us, it's difficult to monitor what the organization is doing. TeachWorthy is one of the online ACPs that actually does a pretty good job, but we don't know along the way, but we are communicating to see if they're moving along within their program at our touchpoints to make sure they're moving through their modules. That is really where they get hung up.
Yeah, we talked a lot about really monitoring them better after the listening sessions that I did out on campus this spring of twenty-one, and these were a lot of the people that came that wanted to talk to me because they, they, they hadn't fulfilled their requirements, and it's almost like they forgot they had to do it, and they were surprised, like, oh, really, I won't have a job? Because, and even though they knew, right, when they signed up, they have one year to fulfill all the requirements, but they, there was a lot of angst among these teachers because they had not done what they needed to do. We were in the spring of the year, and that's really when we, you know, really started focusing on, we gotta get more certified teachers, they're, these, they're not finishing. And so this is, we've got to do something different.
At some point, you've got to, at some point, you've got to meet your responsibility. Right? I got a friend in the back corner who's working on a doctorate, and being a principal all at the same time, right? And so, at, at some point, there's accountability on a person to do what you say you're gonna do. And, and you can lead a horse to water, but from there, it's on the person to get it done.
We heard them in good faith that they will do it.
That's exactly, that's part of the agreement.
Yeah, it's part of the agreement, and, yeah, they're...
I'm also looking, though, trying to do mental math, but it's roughly like seventy-five percent.
Right, not successful.
The people did not...
That's why we went, why we said, let's use some of our ESAR funding to recruit certified teachers. Let's try to get them up front and not struggle to get them certified later. And that was effective.
I was, to Jonathan's point, I got my alternative certification, and that test is not easy. The pedagogy one is the one I'm thinking of. And much like other tests, it's not realistic. And so actually, the more, my experience was, the more you're in the classroom before you take that test, the harder the test is, because it's just unrealistic. But I did have an idea that Donna McKethen was my teacher, my pedagogy teacher, and she's retired now with probably not much to do. I mean, if we could bring her back and tutor two of these kids, or two of these teachers...
I went through alternative certification as well, and did it through Region Twelve, and it was intense, eight weeks in the summer, but intense. And then I had Judy Trout Burdette, who's a legend in this community, was my mentor, and she was in my room every week.
Me too.
Every week, asking me, why were you doing that? Let me see your lesson plan, is that right? You know? So I, I had the benefit of a great mentor, but yeah, that pedagogy test is hard, especially when she's been teaching for a year. But it would be great if we, if, because our ESAR funds are dwindling and going away in twenty-four, I believe, we're, we're gonna be back to this unless a whole bevy of teachers moves to Waco. It would be, it would be cool if we could help them some way.
I, I would just sit, just echo that, because just some kind of assistance, I think, is, because we do want people who can fulfill their commitments that they signed up for, but I do think it's, it's important for us to add some help. Clearly, I think it's needed. They need some kind of assistance that they are getting from their ACP or wherever they're getting their certification from. So I think anything we can do, whether it's tutoring, or maybe off-time, something to assist them, so we can get more of these people in our classrooms.
Mr. Lopez, I just, or Dr. Lopez, sorry, I do want to commend the district for hiring certified teachers, because I noticed when we had looked at our pie chart, we had a lot of new teachers and emergency certified, and, and there's, again, nothing wrong with that. Wonderful teachers have come forth from those programs, but I do think when you've got fifty percent of your teaching staff that doesn't have the kind of, these, these aren't veterans or don't have that kind of experience under their belt, it, it becomes harder to do that mentoring, to do that kind of role modeling. So I, I do want to commend the, all of the hard work you guys did to get all those certified teachers, because I don't know where you found them, but you did, so thank you.
And, and to the point, and I want to go back to the slide, is this is not a new issue for Waco ISD. It has been prevalent here since 2014, fifteen. And whatever reasons are there, we are just bringing them to light, because we are working on programs to really try to help bring certified people, but also build our own within this community. And this is what really this presentation is going to be about, is what I, what I spoke to you all about at workshop was, it is the most important thing that we do to get folks who actually live in this community to invest in this community and to work in this community, because they know it. They know the kids, they know the families that are around them, and if we can offer a way of assistance to get them here, which is what we're going to get deeply involved with here in just a few minutes, I think it'll answer many of the, the concerns that we have as a group, because it is bothersome to me as an educator to see this. It really does hurt my heart for kids. And to the point, when you're talking about alternative programs, they will be, they are and are the highest number of people involved in a program. Traditional routes, if you look up there, are really low. There are like ninety-three thousand across this country. The alternative, which is an institution of higher education base, like MCC, where they do have an alternative program, those, those sit at about eleven thousand, but the highest number for getting into the profession is the alternative certification route, not affiliated with a higher institution. It is like an I Teach Texas, it is like Texas Teachers or TeachWorthy, an online program that sits at about seventeen thousand across this country, which is only going to continue to grow as people do not come into this profession. Conversations like we just had with Mrs. Bell, there's a reason why people are leaving, right? I mean, there's, there's a, there's a ton of other reasons that there are stressors for, for people to not get into the profession, but it's not only limited to our teaching force, it's also causing a principal shortage across this country and this state specifically. And so in this US News World Report, you'll see that they're wanting to leave because the work has gotten so difficult. When you're dealing with, and we hear it on our end, the, the mental health issues that people are dealing with as adults to function in a day-to-day, and then dealing with student emotional and social and behavioral issues, trying to work through that, you begin to see the strain that the educational system is putting on people alone. It's not a profession that people are walking into. I remember, I grew up in Plano ISD, and to get a teaching position there, and I went to school there, I mean, I was lucky because I had an N, but it was difficult to get into that school district. It's not anymore. And so we're searching all over the place to find people, to fill the voids within classrooms, and to continue to work with kids so they understand. When you get a teacher who's not certified, who hasn't gone through a traditional route, who's not had the training on the background, how to deal with certain issues with kids in the classroom, you get somebody who's an ACP, and they're having to learn quickly, they're coming from another profession, there's no background for them, they don't have tools in their toolbox yet, and they struggle. You can have a mentor teacher, but at the end of the day, if you, if you're losing teachers and your staff is over fifty percent new, who are your mentor teachers, right? New people who've just gotten there, who don't have tools to share. So I think that is larger than the scope, right, to solve, but I think what, what this district has been doing prior to even my arrival, when Dr. Kinkanen got here, is trying to build that pipeline and really make sure that we find people who want to be here, who want to be invested here, not just for the sign-on bonus, but truly want to be here, invested in this community to build our kids to where they need to be for the future. If there's not any questions for me, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Cox, because I promise you, she's delightful, and she really has led this to a great place. She's impressive, so I'm gonna turn it over.
I just want to say real quick, I, I know my only experience in college education is at Baylor, and I knew dozens upon dozens of friends that were education majors at Baylor, and it was more reasonable back then. It costs about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year now to go to Baylor, which is more than the starting salary of a teacher. And so I can't comprehend how Baylor still has a, a teaching degree when you might graduate with, you know, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars worth of debt. It just, I, I think the pipelines have to be different, because the cost of, of secondary education is just rising faster than the, than the average salaries across the state. You, you can't go to a traditional school necessarily and expect to be able to pay all your bills when you get out.
They're actually, the school of education has shrunk for that reason, they have less candidates coming out.
So I'm Melissa Cox, I am the Director of Opportunity Culture, and I'm really excited to share about our Grow Our Own program. So we're first gonna start off with our priorities with Waco ISD. And we want to use innovative strategies to build a pipeline of certified teachers and future administrators. And we want to grow our own and retain our own teachers, and, and we want to grow from our current students, our paraprofessionals, into certified teachers. And we want to create a diverse teaching workforce to serve our students and our school. So we're just gonna take a holistic look at current initiatives that we have in our district, and we're gonna start first with our Future Educator Academy. And this is our students right now in high school, so this can start as their freshman year. So we have sort of two tracks there, is we have the Academy of Education and Training at both high schools, where students can participate in a coherent CTE sequence and have the opportunity to graduate with a paraprofessional certification. And then we also have PTEC, which is located at South Waco Elementary School, where students have the great opportunity to gain dual credit. We want them to hopefully graduate with an associate's degree, but at South Waco, they're also able to get field experience, where they're going into the classroom, they're seeing great teaching, and also start working with students. And so this is where our work really begins. Our second area we're gonna look at is our Parrot Teacher Program, and this is with our paraprofessionals. And our current track or pathway that we have in place is our Alternative Certification Pathway. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in just a second. And then we're gonna speak a little bit later about an innovative pathway to help support... to help support paraprofessionals in obtaining a bachelor's degree. Another area that we have in our Grow Our Own program is our Teacher Leader Academy. And I have the great opportunity to help lead this work. This is the second year that we've had a cohort. It's a year-long cohort where we have continuous professional development. I have check-ins, we do coaching and feedback. But the purpose of this is for teachers to try to gain more leadership and teacher and leader credibility and also work on what efficacy is in the classroom. And, and then we have Opportunity Culture. This is where also I'm very passionate about and because I get to work with this, um, this initiative every day. And what Opportunity Culture is, I was here several months ago to talk about Opportunity Culture. But it is an innovative program, or it's a model, it's not a program, innovative model that pays teachers, paraprofessionals, and student teachers more funds to spread equity of instruction across the campus. And that's done through observation, feedback, and coaching. And so I've been with the Waco ISD family for a little bit, over a year. And from when I started, we had five campuses that were Opportunity Culture. In this fall, we have 10. And the work that we're seeing going on every day is amazing. And the last facet we're gonna talk about is the Aspiring Leaders Academy. And this is a two-year-long program that teachers, instructional coaches, and multi-classroom leaders or assistant principals can participate in, and it's two years to be able to grow in leadership and look at different task and skills to build their toolbox to be effective campus administrators. So the first pathway we're gonna dive into is our Alternative Certification Pathway. And this pathway is currently for paraprofessionals. And we partner with McLennan Community College, and they are wonderful partners to work with. And anytime I call or email, they're very ready to, to talk and collaborate to see how we can best serve our community. And, but we will partner with MCC and for degreed paraprofessionals to enroll in the AltCert program. So these are paraprofessionals that are currently working with us that have a bachelor's degree, but just haven't taken the step to be certified. So for the last two years, Waco ISD has covered the cost of the coursework. So up to $5,000 that pays for tuition and fees. And, and each year, we've changed the model just a little bit. And, but the majority, well, all of our candidates that have participated are provided release time, so they are able to go to coursework during a workday. And then we also provide oversight to ensure that that program's completed for them to be certified. So there's two pathways. They first apply with Waco ISD, and then we interview. And if those candidates meet the requirements, then they apply with MCC and interview with them because they have different requirements to participate in the program. And this is sort of just like an overall timeline for certification. So we're getting ready to start Cohort 3, so the third year of the pathway. And in October, we'll have multiple information sessions and that will also be recorded. So if someone can't participate, they can watch the video to see how, who, who, who this program is for and how to apply. And we co-present with MCC. And, and then they apply with us, and we hold interviews. And the candidates that are selected then move on to the MCC application, and they interview. And that process is all completed by December because the majority of the coursework starts in the spring. And so they're able to, depending on the certifications, and they're able to attend coursework in the spring and accomplish two of the courses. So their core, and then also the Science of Teaching and Reading. And, and then in the summer, there's also courses that they participate in. And then, and they then work on passing those tests that we talked about earlier, and an internship. So once they are hired, then they will start a monthly internship that MCC also helps to partner with.
How many, how many do we have that have completed that?
Oh, I'm gonna get that in a second. And so the first year of implementation, and the certification area was early childhood, which is pre-K through sixth grade. This last year with Cohort 2, we extended the opportunities to secondary. And with the early childhood through sixth grade, those are the classes that were offered face-to-face. And with MCC, they have to have a certain amount of participants, and there are more participants in the lower grades of certification than with secondary. So we did expand this last year. And for Cohort 3, we're expanding that 4th through 8th grade will be able to also be provided face-to-face. So we're really excited about that. And so for this last year, and for the EC through sixth grade, and all the candidates were given up to eight paid days. So they didn't have to take off, they didn't have to go after school. So on a workday, they went and attended coursework. And I would like to give recognition to Mrs. Lozano, the Principal at Kendrick Elementary. She provided the space for the instructor of MCC to come to her campus, and that's where the candidates participated in the coursework. And we also partnered with a couple other districts to ensure that we had the amount of candidates to meet the requirements for MCC. And so for the first year, and they started the coursework in the spring of 2022. These are the candidates that went through the program and then were hired last year. And, and those were the campuses that they were hired on last year. So that was Cohort 1. And this is some information of how the program affected. This is from Chris Allen. "This program has changed my life for the better. It is not, if not for this program, getting my teacher certification would have been a huge financial burden. I am so thankful to Waco ISD for providing a pathway for me to achieve my dream of having my own classroom." So this last year, and they started the coursework in the spring of 2023, and these are the candidates that qualified for the program. And here are a few quotes from them. And so now it's my great honor to introduce one of our candidates that participated in the program. Mrs. Carrion, will you come up?
All right.
And so while she's coming up, I want to share a little bit about Ms. Carrion. And so it's special to me, too. She participated in the Peer-to-Teacher Program, but she's also been a part of Opportunity Culture. So for the two previous school years, she's been a Reach Associate, which is a paraprofessional. And she's gotten to work with our multi-classroom leader, Ms. Collinick. And Ms. Collinick is here as well. And so for two years, Ms. Carrion has been able to learn from Ms. Collinick through observation and coaching. And when I'm there, I've observed small groups, Ms. Carrion teaching. And we were so excited. Ms. Carrion not only has completed the coursework through MCC, but she also completed her bachelor's degree at the same time and filled her bachelor's degree in May of '23. So we're so excited about that. And she was hired as a first-grade teacher at Kendrick Elementary. So she now has her own classroom. But Ms. Carrion is gonna share about how this program has impacted her.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me share tonight. Again, like when he started, Dr. Lopez, when he started, he said, "We just heard all this bad information about the scores, and it was kind of sad in the room, I'm gonna be honest." But I was really excited to hear the passion that each and every one of you have to serve our community. So first, I want to say thank you for everything that you do. But you said something powerful, said, somebody said, you know, "It's kind of sad that we're investing and the rates aren't producing." But I'm here as the good news that there is growth in what we're doing in the programs here in Waco ISD. I'm avid believer of Waco ISD in my community. I went to Waco ISD schools. My children were raised in Waco ISD schools. But I've always had a passion to reach my community. And I kind of have a motto, you know, you can't, if you're not, if you're gonna, you can't really complain about something unless you're willing to step in and go be a part of the change. And so shout out to Waco ISD for giving me that opportunity to, uh, to grow within the district. Somebody said it tonight. Um, you really have to get someone that wants to be in the community, be a part of the community, and better the community. And I think that's where the change is gonna be at for Waco ISD. This, that's why I'm so, you know, I'm a product of this program, yes, but at the same time, I believe in it. If we put the time and energy, and just like we do with our kids, every day, you can do it. There's people, I worked for Waco ISD, this is now my eighth year with the district. But I started as a paraprofessional, and this program gave me the opportunity. Like she said, I was completing my bachelor program in May. That's something that took a very long, and you can look at me, I'm not a traditional college student. I'm not 19 years old up here, but it was a journey. And it took a little bit long, but I did it. And this, and this program, you know, it encouraged me. It put people in my path that believed in me. And that's what it takes, you know? Yes, it's hard, it was not easy. It, it's still a struggle and a journey. I'm learning new things every day. But I've had the opportunity with Opportunity Culture to sit under four teachers in my team in my grade level for the last three years, four years, I'm sorry, under them. I got to start as a paraprofessional in each and every one of those classrooms. And now God has just worked it out in my path that I was able to stay there under that same team, be hired with that same team. I'm now still with my MCL that I serve with. My mentor teacher was here also, but she had to leave. I worked in her classroom. And my MTR team, I worked in her classroom as well. So everybody that I have playing a part in my new role this year, they all played a part. They all showed me a different aspect. So the opportunity here that I had is to sit under four awesome teachers at an amazing campus with amazing administration in the community that I love. Kendrick is not, we're next-door neighbors to my church, his house, that just got presented an award. So I'm there, I'm vested in it. And that's what it takes, believing in our people that are there and being grinding. And maybe they need another push like me. Like, it took my awesome team of four to say, "Carrion, you're doing this work. Go, go finish, you got this." And they gave me the opportunity. And so I just thank you guys for letting me share that with you.
Can I make a comment? Uh, I, I, I think it's, um, I, I don't think it's unknown to anyone here that if you ask a group of paraprofessionals what they do, they'll probably say the same thing teachers do, except we just don't get paid as much. I, I, I worked with Mr. Carrion at university for a long time, and I can tell you personally how deeply invested he is in the community and in his students. And I just want to say, I think you are exactly the product we're hoping to get out of this program. I mean, it's just absolutely incredible. Great work.
And so just to add that this work is not represented in our accountability as well.
We should get an A+ for this.
So, but we are very proud of the work that we're doing, the Opportunity Culture, and then also with our Grow Our Own. So thank you, Ms. Carrion. Thank you, Ms. Collinick, for the work that you do. And I know Ms. Lozano is here, too, so thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna discuss an innovative model. So bear in mind, we are still in our design process. And this is something that's different. But it's innovative because we know we have to be innovative now. And because with, working with Opportunity Culture, we try to recruit teacher residents that are in the traditional path. And this year, all they could get us was six student teachers. And, and so we meet every other month, and we talk about how things are going, what support we're providing. We met today, and they gave us great accolades of the wonderful things that they're seeing with our MCLs and our OC campuses. But every, all our feedback is, "We need more, we need more." And, and so that sort of pivots into our next discussion. So over the last year, and working with the Grow Our Own program, and then working with candidates of, who I, I see in the classroom every day, and, you know, we do have vacancies. And many of those vacancies are often covered with paraprofessionals that are paid at a paraprofessional rate. And I talk to them, I'm like, "Hey, why, why are you not completing your degree? What's stopping you?" And because they have the skills and they have the desire to impact our students. And so from what we found through research and also from just hearing from our staff is that the cost, it's very expensive to get a degree, especially if you are paid at a paraprofessional. And plus, having a family at home. And we all know how the cost of living has increased. And, and then one thing is confidence, that they have the ability, but just not the confidence to start. Because maybe they tried, and they had obstacles and challenges that set them back, and they just don't have the confidence to start again. And, and then time to dedicate to completing that work and to become a certified teacher. So when we first started talking about this work, we had two target areas we really wanted to focus in on. And that's our current paraprofessionals and auxiliary staff. And then also looking at our high school students and our Future Education Academy. And so where we have landed in our design process is looking at hiring teacher interns. A teacher intern would be hiring a vetted paraprofessional that has demonstrated a proven track record. So we have evidence that they have customer management skills, that they have a likelihood to impact student outcomes, that they want to be here, that they work hard and have a strong work ethic. And these vetted paraprofessionals would be required to attend paraprofessional development before they would be placed in a pool for hire. And the reason for the paraprofessional, I mean, excuse me, for the professional development is twofold, is that there are skills that they're still needing. So we would work with curriculum instruction, student services, special populations, to look at the skills that we need. And then we would design coursework that would be similar to a college course. So like we said earlier, some have difficulty with online. And, but we do know that with our clientele, we're gonna need an online platform because it would be very difficult with a family working full-time to go to classes at night. And so we would simulate the professional development online like a college course that they would have to complete prior to even being potentially hired. These teacher interns would be paid at a reduced rate of a teacher's salary and have the option to partner with vetted universities. So we have started the process of looking at different universities that offer the things that we're needing, like online, different costs, because some universities are very expensive, to some can qualify and it's at a, a very reduced rate. So you're saying at a reduced salary. Well, that, that difference in salary would help pay for an instructional specialist that would be devoted strictly for the interns because we know they're gonna need a lot of support. We know that they're gonna have to have someone help them with time management to check, are they doing their grades? Are they doing their coursework? How are we progressing? And, and they're gonna need a mentor and, and support and that, that cheerleader and that motivator because they're gonna be working full-time and then also going to school. So what this would look like is, um, our plan, and still, this is in the initial design phase, is that the district would hire a non-degreed employees as teacher interns. This would be pending board and TEA approval of a revised District of Innovation Plan. These teacher interns will have school experience in our district and have a strong potential to earn a degree and become a certified teacher. Teacher interns will be paid more than a paraprofessional. And the midpoint for paraprofessionals is currently around $25,000 and approximately $10,000 less than a certified teacher. And that's the salary for this year. So about $10,000 less is what we would project, that we would pay the teacher interns. And the district would cap the initial number of interns hired at 15. Additional interns may be hired each year, but not to exceed 25 in any single school year.
Ma'am, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
I have two. For this plan, is there a, a year limit for these interns? Will we give them four years to complete a degree, assuming that they may not have any college credit?
And so all of those requirements have not been established yet because we are, have some more work that we need to do. But those would all be lined out in a handbook that we...
And would that also go for TRS? And would that also go for TRS pension?
So, because they are, would be interns working, they won't get the TRS service credit. But what they would get on the back, and I don't know if you were going into this later on, but what we would do is, if it takes them four years, some of them may come with credit hours already.
Right.
But if it takes them four years, then for us, they wouldn't start at a zero rate, when they came onboard as fully certified teachers. And so, they would get the year's credit for us, but not for TRS. But here's the thing, because they're paras, they would get two years of TRS credit in those years that they've worked.
That's a nice, a nice setup. The, the other thing, fifteen, you said no more than fifteen, up to twenty-five, and you would hire an instructional specialist. Are we looking at these interns being at the same campus? Because I would think that you would need more than one IS if they're all over this district to really give them support like they're going to need.
And, no, they wouldn't necessarily be on one campus. It would depend on the pool and the need. Because the principals would have the ultimate decision of who they hired on their campus. That could be a certified teacher, that they hire from the normal interview process. Or if they're not able to fill that vacancy, then they could look into the intern pool for interview.
Depends on who's interested in the program, right? That might drive where, you know, grade level or subject area. So we've got to find our way with it, still.
And we would look at, the number of instructional specialists would be based on the number of interns that were actually hired in the program. Because that would, we want it to self-pay, you know, to pay for that instructional coach.
And they still receive benefits, like regular parent insurance and whatnot? This is a cool idea.
What are the educational requirements for a paraprofessional? I know he asked about like the amount of years. So is it like sixty credit hours you have to have as a para? Or do you just have to go through the paracertification program? Or what are the requirements educationally?
So for most of the ones that come through, they come in and they take that test, so they can get the paracertification. If they come through with hours, I don't want to, it might be sixty. I don't have that to the top of my head. But we do have many that do come in already with college hours, that may not answer your question, but those hours may actually help them in this program.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to like. Most of the paras probably already have some credit hours, tours, getting their bachelor's. This would just kind of help them. Most of them won't start from scratch, is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, and that's the intent. Because when we start thinking about, when we first started our process and going to different places, Fornie ISD was an actual place we went and visited, who has been doing a program like this, that has been approved through the commissary of education. What they learned through their process is to expand, look at others who may have hours already, but get into different partnerships with universities, so that those credits would transfer over. Their barrier there at the time was that the university that they were using, I believe, was not allowing transfer hours to go into them. So they were having to go four years, when in fact, they may have just needed two or three to get through.
I've got a question. So I was just thinking about this, and all of our little programs, our PTEC, this, 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 you know, we've got a lot going on. And I had a thought, if we have our high school students doing our PTEC dual credit, that means they graduate with an associate's. They could come get hired on as a paraprofessional technically. Reach, reach associate, sorry, sorry, sorry. Reach associate, sorry. Reach associate, apply for this intern pool and get their bachelor's degree taken care of.
That's, that's the intent.
Great, thank you.
So that is our intent, is that we have a true pipeline to grow our current students and find an avenue for their bachelor's degree to be paid for, and then we hire them.
We have a, a money figure idea floating around? For the cost of this program?
There's not a cost for this program.
Just the, the $10,000 over?
It would just be, because you already have that full-time, that FTE already allotted. So if it was like, you need a fifth grade math teacher, well, we have those funds allotted. So the teacher intern would be paid $10,000 less than that money allotted. And then that $10,000 would go towards hiring an instructional coach.
This would only happen if we had teacher vacancies. So if all of our teacher positions were filled, we wouldn't have this program.
Yes.
So it's no extra money we're using.
According to that graph, there's going to be a lot.
We need them.
No, I get it.
And so, our plan, and so since we're initially in the design process, and we really wanted to get your feedback before moving forward, is, that would be our next slide. And so our next steps is to revise the District of Innovation Plan and seek your approval, and also TEAs. And we want to create focus groups, and to gather feedback from our staff members, to ensure that the model that we're designing truly meets the needs of our staff. So those focus groups would include paraprofessionals, teachers, district administrators, campus administrators. So we, we are creating a well-rounded program that supports our staff. And we would develop a parat teacher handbook, which includes application process, and grade requirements, and the amount of credits expected per semester, and also a local teaching commitment. Local requirements, we would develop those professional development courses, and also ensure that we have proctors for those. And continue to explore additional university partnerships. And we would develop.
That was what I was getting at. We're not going to help for the degree?
No, since they, if they were a paraprofessional about that midpoint of $25,000, since they would be getting quite a bit.
Right.
Increase in salary, they would be able to choose what university. Because through our research and what we've explored, is if the district pays for that, the likelihood of them finishing decreases. So if they are paying, they can also qualify for Pell Grants and go to school at a reduced rate. So what we have found is if they are paying, there's more likelihood that they will qualify and it's also cheaper for them.
They have skin in the game.
Yes. And it is not as much red tape for the district as well. So, and then, so our final point is that we are going to develop an employment contract, because it is very important that if we're supporting them and achieving their bachelor's degree, that we want them to stay with us. And so, we will be looking at what that employment contract would look like.
Can we legally do that? Say like, you have to stay three years, we, we give you this program? Can we, you know?
You can, you can write an agreement that says they may have to pay something back. I don't know how much.
I would, I would not think that would be legal, to say, I will give you my next three years.
Yeah, you write an agreement. Yep. It's probably not collectible. That's why that grade and credit expectations, having some checkpoints along the way, is important to be able to stay in the program.
And then also, since we are looking at our vetted paraprofessionals that are already in our district, the research shows that if, the research shows that new teachers pick schools that are close to their high school that they graduated from. And it also shows that new teachers pick schools that are similar to the high school they attended with race and socioeconomic status. And so, we're hoping that as we grow them through the program, they're already committed to us and that they would give us their word too, that we are helping support them. We want them to intern to support us.
I have a question about the colleges that you guys are, so a paras in the program, would they have a list, like, these are the four universities that you can attend? Or will it be just open for them to pick any university? Because I know, when we talked about the, the other certification process, it was like, it's too many programs, so it's hard for us to keep track. So are we going to limit the amount of programs that they're able to, or schools that they're able to attend?
We would like to have them select from partnering universities that we have a good working relationship with, that we know are going to provide the support that they need, and that they're geared towards the certification areas that we want to have produced at the end of this. And so, but we also want the candidate to have the selection, too, of which one that they attend.
So we will provide a list, though, of what we recommend. And I think that's part of what gets us in a bind with our ACPs, is that we can't really say which ones you should go to. We can provide the list, but we can't favor one over the other. In this program, we actually can recommend, because we have vetted and we have talked to them about how it would work with. There are several districts that are doing this right now, that we've been in contact with, that have given us a lot of information, and their pitfalls and the things that they've learned along the way, which is going to help us just be better in our program. But the one thing I will say, as we end this, is that, to the comment about if they will stay, and I said it at the onset, it's being built by this community. It starts with you all, then we bring in a group of people to help us build it through the community. We hire from the community. As you heard the young lady that just left here, she's invested in this community. And that is exactly what we're trying to build. And we believe that it will sustain itself. But in no way are we going to replace the certified teacher that we're always looking for. But as the data showed at the beginning, if we don't, as a district, begin the process of really looking outside the box to do something, we're never going to catch up with the shortage, because it will get bigger and bigger for us, but across the state and this, and this nation. So we hope that as we move forward and bring the revised DOI plan to you, that you'll look at it, you'll give us the opportunity in the green light to move forward, because we've got a lot of work to do to get going, to get people involved and get them rolling by May. Because our job is to build that piece to where we train them with the things we're looking at, like our, our bootcamps for discipline, our PLC plus, all those things that they're going to need to know ahead of time to be ready before they actually get in the classroom, to build them and be successful with them. Any other questions?
I just, I, I tell my kids all the time, the grass isn't greener on the other side. The grass is greener where you water it. And this is a beautiful example of what it looks like to water your neighborhood. And, and if you create an environment that is loving and inviting, nurturing, then your retention levels are just going to be so much higher. And so, thank you for helping to create a model that I believe will help in extraordinary ways, our retention levels and, and even attracting people from other places.
Is as we're focusing in on growing our students, we're changing generations of what they potentially can do, and we're changing their families. And so, to me, I'm just very passionate about this. This is a game changer for our students and our current paraprofessionals.
Me and you.
I'd say this is definitely a win for the district. I appreciate the work that you guys put in. I think y'all hit the nail on the head. We need to start with people who are already invested, who have been here putting in time, money, energy, heart, blood, sweat and tears into our kids for years. So I think this is where, and then, so even more awesome opportunity for our kids that will be able to go through PTEC and then come back and have an opportunity to get their bachelor's paid for as well. So I think it's a win for the city. Like you said, breaking generational curses, breaking a lot of cycles that have plagued our city. So I, I appreciate this program, looking forward to see everything that will come out of it.
Well, you hear districts call it Grow Your Own. We changed it. Because if you look at the beginning, one of those slides that talks about Future Teacher Academy, Parat Teacher, Teacher Leader, Opportunity Culture, Inspiring Leaders Academy, we are growing our own. And so, we wanted to own it, and that's why it's Grow Our Own initiative for us. So we appreciate the opportunity and time.
What do you need from us to say?
Pass it.
Do it.
Approve the DOI.
Yeah, I just want, I think it's fantastic. I think it's going to be maybe a few years before we really see the benefits of this, but it won't surprise me at all if you have lots of phone calls from surrounding districts asking you how you got this off the ground.
Mr., or Dr. Lopez and Ms. Cox, I just have to say, when I look at this one piece in the puzzle of all that the district is doing, I mean, this is huge, 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 huge. So thank you. And one word is bravo. Bravo, well done.
One last question. You had mentioned that, that there's a similar program in another school district. Fornie, how long has their program been in existence? And what kind of?
They're in their fourth year now.
And what kind of results are they seeing?
Well, tremendous. They, actually now, there are, so they started out with a really, we're only taking paras that have been working in our district. Now they've expanded to any paras that are applying new are able to get involved in the program. But they've gone from, I think they started out with ten, fifteen at the time, and they grew the next year to, I think, thirty? I mean, some unreal number.
That's fantastic.
And I'm sure the retention rate is low. I mean, high. They have a low, low need for teachers, because they have a high retention rate.
When they surround them, like we're, like we're talking about surrounding them, which gets to the question that you had about the, the students in the ACP not make. We're working to surround our folks, because we can control that. We can do something about it. And the story that you heard from the young lady that was here, we heard three different stories when we visited with them, from three different folks that generationally had been there and their parents have gone through. They have no intention of leaving their district.
Great work, Dr. Lopez. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We're moving on to number fourteen announcements.
Evening, President Cordwig, Dr. Kinkanen, trustees. I feel like we were just here talking about the start of school, and now I get to talk to you about homecoming. This week has been University High's Homecoming Week. Their football game kicks off tomorrow night at the stadium at 7:00 PM versus Colleen Chaparral. Monday, September 25th, so this is the Monday coming up, is a student holiday and a staff development day. And as Dr. Kinkanen shared in her superintendent's report, we'll be celebrating a community beam signing at Tennyson Middle School. Board members, you are invited to help kick off the beam signing with us at around 11:45, before we open it fully to the public, if you're able to make it. Again, that's 11:45 Monday. The communications team will be on-site greeting our community members, our staff from Tennyson, our families, until 6:00 PM Monday night, to give them a chance to sign that beam. It, it looks good so far. It actually looks like a nice eighty-something degrees, minimal rain, but we all need rain, I know. So, but looking good right now. Thursday, September 28th, at 6:00 PM, is our University High School Fall Choir Concert at University High. Next Friday is not only the Tasby Conference that many of you will be attending, it's also Waco High's Homecoming. Football game kicks off at 7:00 PM against Colleen Ellison at the Waco ISD Stadium. October 4th, Waco ISD Middle School Distinguished Soloist Recital is going to be hosted at University High School at 5:00 PM. October 9th is our next student and staff holiday. And then our next board meeting will be a workshop at Dean Highland Elementary on Thursday, October 19th. We'll pick back up where we left off with the District Improvement Plan. A lot of great work in there. Again, that's Dean Highland Elementary at 6:00 PM on October 19th. Thursday, October 19th. We'll pick back up where we left off with the District Improvement Plan, a lot of great work in there. Again, that's Dean Highland Elementary at 6:00 PM on October 19th, followed by our regular meeting the next Thursday, October 26th, back here at the Administration Building.
Wonderful. Lots of great things happening. Thank you so much, Ms. Cox. Okay, so Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at 8:50 PM pursuant Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551.072, 551.076, and 551.071.
Will we make any decisions?
Uh, there will be no, yeah, we will take no action when we come back.